We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for July thirty first, two thousand and eighteen. We'll call Mr. Veder.
Laylan.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Magzman.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here. I have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received.
I'll move to the second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? Moving on to claims of payment. Resolution for the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures for the county. Grant, did you take care of that?
Yes, the claims for the county this week are in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars and eleven cents, two-five-eight oh-nine-nine point one-one.
I'll move on to resolution.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion on it? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Resolution to approve expenditures for Country View.
Country View expenses that are being paid this week are seventy thousand eight sixty-five sixty-three, seven oh eight six five point six three. That's holding back three hundred thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents for June benefits that are owed to the county.
Is that, last week we held back two, is that the total or the same thing? It's not more?
I'm not sure. Is it additional?
Same one.
Oh, it's the same thing?
It's the same.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to the second. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Good morning, Board. Cathy Nicholas, county engineer. I'd like to give you a brief update this morning on our construction projects and the status. This morning Aspro is paving in Dewar. This is the portion just south of Donald Street for approximately half a mile. They will be paving today and then they should be shouldering tomorrow and finishing up the project hopefully by the end of the week in Dewar. Other construction includes our bridge on Finchford Road. That project started two weeks ago. It is an eighty working day contract, so we are just in the very beginnings of that project. We have received quite a few concerns from residents. We are trying to work out getting dust control to some of the other residents, in particularly Butler and Bremer County. And then we need to get some intersections mode in that area, those areas as well. Our Jessup Road, we have a small bridge, two small bridges on Jessup Road that are being overlaid, resurfaced. So Jessup Road is closed between Fox Road and Rickard Road to allow our contractor to do that work. There's a detour. We have placed dust control on those routes as well. And then our bridge crew is still working on installing new culverts on Cedar Wopsy Road between Burton Avenue and Highway sixty-three. That's still going to take a week or two longer. Those are large culverts. And this most recent set, we did find some unknown foundations under, as we were removing the old pipes, so probably going to take another week to get that road reopened. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you Cathy.
Thanks Cathy.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Minutes approved for July twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Full motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
Some move.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution at the amendment number five to the summit, summary plan description between Blackhawk County and a preferred one for both seven fifty and five hundred deductible medical options be for ABA therapy effective January first, eighteen, be approved.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution at the health service network access and administration agreement between Blackhawk County and Preferred One Administrative Services for the ABA Therapy State Mandate Regarding Treatment for Autism Effective July first, eighteen, be approved as recommended by Deadbug, our Human Resource Director.
So actually the one you just did at number A, that was for the ABA therapy, so this is just a little turned around on the agenda. This one is just for the administrative services agreement.
B.
B is for the administrative services agreement. And that is just for the fees per member per month, which is stays the same as last year, so for this year it's twenty-six fifty again.
So this is just for the admin agreement?
Yep.
B.
Yep.
Some move.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the business associate agreement between Blackhawk County and proactive solutions be approved as recommended by Kim Veder, IT Director.
Some moved.
Second.
Any questions for Kim on this? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from Marco Incorporated, St. Cloud, Minnesota for the phone system upgrade with a bid of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars, sixty-eight cents be approved and for the chair to sign it for the contract conditional to receipt a certificate of insurance as recommended by Roy Givin, Maintenance Superintendent.
Some move.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Roy Givin, Maintenance Superintendent.
Good morning.
We have reviewed Marco's proposal, which was open last week. We are recommending that we go with...
Are they the only ones?
Yeah. They were the only ones. We recommend that we go with the based upgrade bid in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. That includes all labor and material along with a one-year service agreement. Marco did indicate that we are currently in a service agreement with them. They would honor that agreement until FY nineteen and then the one-year service agreement with this package would begin at that time. We did ask for alternates, a second year and a third year agreement. We are going to present that to the board as a separate item per the recommendation of Susan. So at a later date, we will bring those requests for the second and third year, taking advantage of the savings as a bundled project.
How much was budgeted?
We had budgeted for this, I believe it was three hundred and thirty-two thousand. Don't have the exact number, but it was in, it was right around three hundred and thirty-two thousand. We're approximately five thousand dollars over on that budget.
And so this will take, this old contract will take us into, till the new system is in place?
Till the end of June of two thousand and nineteen, our existing service agreement will stay in place and then the new service agreement will go into effect.
How long, how long is this going to take to complete?
What we're looking at for this particular system is we will, once the contracts are signed, we'll get the material ordered. Our goal is to have the system up and running by the end of October.
And you'd be, any projected downtime on our phones?
We'll do one facility at a time. We'll more than likely do those after hours, do those tie-ins after hours, so there will be no real notice of downtime for the employees. There will be training involved because each employee will have a new handset, so there'll be some training involved with that just to learn how to simply operate it.
Is that a different phone?
Yes. Handset.
We mean, are we doing this, some of this work in-house ourselves or what? You said we.
No, this is all, Marco is going to be installing the system and providing the training.
All right, sounds good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We already have a motion.
This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from WBC Mechanical for water heater, heat exchangers in this jail with a bid of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars forty-four cents be approved and recommended by Roy Givin, Maintenance Supervisor.
Second.
Superintendent.
This, I'm sorry. This is a replacement water coil slash heat exchanger for one of two of our Raypack water heaters over at the jail. The, this Raypack water heater had developed a leak in the coil system. This is for material only. Our staff will be doing the install on this. And we did seek three proposals for this material, so our recommendation is to go with WBC Mechanical in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-four cents.
How old's, how old's this system?
This Raypack water heater system is ten plus years old. This is, we've, just recently, if you recall, it's probably been within the last twelve months, we replaced the packing on this water heater. This is more of a mechanical piece of it.
What's it supply?
This is a, for the county jail, this is one of two water heaters for this, for the building.
Can get away with cold water, Sheriff.
Yes, I want to just identify that this is an item that is coming out of the jail commensary fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Givin. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the agreement between Blackhawk County, Iowa and Iowa Department of Transportation requesting traffic safety improvement program funding for project Cedar Wopsy Road resurfacing from Highway two eighteen east to Highway sixty-three to resurface five point one miles of Cedar Wopsy Road and widening the existing pavement two feet, placing shoulder rumble strips along both outer roadway edges and placing six inch white edge line pavement markings for the entire project in the amount of two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Total project is estimated at one million nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
Some move.
Second.
Cathy.
Yeah, so I've told you that next year we will be resurfacing Cedar Wopsy Road from Highway two eighteen to US sixty-three. That road in particular has experienced a large increase in traffic, about twenty-five percent since the interchange was opened on the west end. We are working with the Office of Traffic and Safety. They have grants available to reduce lane departure accidents on, on roadways. And the money is meant to be spent on a systemic investment, so we're investing in the entire roadway. We're not just focusing on, on spots. Because crashes, for the most part, do tend to be random. We don't know where they will be in the future. So that's why we are going to place the, the six inch, the wider pavement markings in the whole corridor. We're also going to be replace, replacing rumble stripe along that, the edges along the entire corridor. And then we'll be widening the, the shoulders along the entire five miles, so we're hoping that that will reduce runoff the road departures, reduce accidents in the future. And this, this is just the application to receive the funding we should receive in, we should know in January, excuse me, if we do receive the funding for this project.
Can we receive this for other projects, Cathy?
We did. We received similar type funding on desert roads several years ago when we placed the rumble stripes along that corridor as well.
Any further questions? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business. This is a resolution to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held on the fourteenth day of August, two thousand and eighteen, nine oh five in Boardroom two oh one, propose to take action for the application of not to exceed four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of bond proceeds to the general obligation bond series twenty fifteen for essential county purposes. Move to the second. Any discussion on this item? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Laylan.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh seven on Tuesday, August fourteenth in Boardroom two oh one, ordinance number seventy-seven dash two twelve for a request submitted by Michael Carmenzine at fifty-six seventy-five Mount Burner Road to rezone two point one acres, or two point zero one acres of A agricultural district to A R agricultural residential for, to build a single family home.
Some move.
Second.
This is all, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Full motion carried. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine oh nine, Tuesday, August fourteenth, Boardroom two oh one, Blackhawk County Courthouse, ordinance number seventy-seven dash two thirteen, request submitted by Beverly Schaper at east of nine twenty-eight West Griffin Road to rezone two point one one acres from A District to A R.
Some move.
Agricultural.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion on this? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full motion carried. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing that held at nine eleven on Tuesday, August fourteen, Boardroom two oh one, ordinance number seventy-seven two fourteen for sixty-four thirty-four Waverly Road to rezone four point one nine acres from agricultural district A R residential and residential suburban district to agricultural residential district to build three new single family homes.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Full motion carried. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at nine thirteen, Tuesday, August fourteen, propose number seventy-seven two fifteen for, from a request submitted by Wayne Satterley, eighty-four thirty-six Barkley Road to rezone point three one acres from agricultural district to commercial district to allow for the construction of a thirty-six by sixty accessory structure for a commercial business.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full motion carried. This is a motion to request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Ben Dellegardele be approved and direct the chairs assigned for same to purchase five refurbished pumps for seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty cents from Cedar Valley Pump for the Washburn sanitary system.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full motion carried. Motion for the request purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chairs assigned for same. Purchase one speed trailer for thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from Stalker Richardson Texas for the secondary realty department.
Some move. Second.
So I've provided some information to you in an email about our proposed use of these trailers. We are working in conjunction with the Blackhawk County Sheriff's Office to purchase, I would purchase one of these trailers and they would purchase another one of these trailers. We would buy them in conjunction. They would be identical trailers, so our staffs would know how to use both trailers. We envision using these for purposes of, for example, emergencies on Interstate twenty or Interstate three eighty, Highway twenty, for example. If that road has to be closed in an emergency, we could take these trailers out there and inform the public, provide better direction, better signing to motorists who are caught in a traffic jam, for example. I personally would like to see these used on, we frequently are giving our drivers, county residents who are traveling through on our roads who we know will be resurfacing those roadways in the next week, or we will be closing the road in the next week due to a construction project or a culvert replacement or a bridge closure, for example. We put up signs every, in every case, in front of those in the week before we begin that project to alert the public that the road will be closed next week for thirty days, for example. We could use these trailers as a message board to inform the public that there will be a closure on these roads. I would also like to use these signs as a campaign to increase awareness for pedestrian bicyclists. We, I know there have been quite a few recent accidents and fatalities, bicycles and pedestrians here in Blackhawk County. I really believe that we can be more proactive in this effort to get more awareness out to the public to walk on the left side of the road, for example, when you're walking. If you're bicycling, you need to be on the right side of the road. So I see this as a good tool, an effective tool to alert the public in some of that, those educational efforts. We often get requests from neighborhoods, some of our suburban subdivisions, for example, the Beaver Hills area, the Washburn area, that drivers are going too fast through those areas. These signs have the capability, they have a radar on the sign, and they can alert the public to the speed that they're actually going. Those are very popular, very common now in many smaller cities, many urban areas where a driver knows their speed immediately and then they can speed, slow down to, you know, conform with that speed limit. We can place these out in our rural subdivisions, for example, to get people to be aware of their, their speeds. So I'd like to request that we be allowed to purchase one. We did budget thirteen thousand dollars in the FY nineteen budget. And in working, like I said, with the sheriff, we believe that we can get a good deal, a better deal when we're purchasing two of these vehicles. Trailers, excuse me. Can I answer any questions?
Just to point out, the bicycles have the right to the full lane, not just to the right side of it.
I'd invite the sheriff to speak if he would like to, or...
One of the other things Cathy neglected to talk about was when we do get those complaints about speed and things of that nature, these speed trailers also capture the data. So that when we meet with the neighborhood watch groups and things of that nature, we can talk specifics, not just anecdotal, hey, I stand in my front yard and I see people speed by. We can talk about the frequency and the speeds and, and actually use that for targeted enforcement as well. We're paying for ours out of seized and forfeited funds and are applying through the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau to repatriate about forty-five hundred dollars worth of that expense as the GTSB also recognizes the importance of these trailers and the public safety aspect. Cathy mentioned car, bike accidents. I forwarded the board where we could have used this in an emergent nature, that two eighteen fatality that we had. We just had another PI this morning, personal injury accident in Gilbertville involving a bicyclist. And so having those on hand and being able to increase our capabilities because we have those readily available to us is a huge public safety improvement as well as an officer's safety improvement for scene safety while we're out there. So it's one of the things that we're, we're moving forward with. We've been working on it about two years and in earnest for the last eight months preparing for this partnership.
I just want to thank both of you, I think, for the additional information. I know we, we discussed it during budget and approved it and taxed for it, but I said the additional information, I think you both provided was helpful to all the uses for it, so thank you.
I appreciate it. I think you laid out a bunch of really important safety measures that can be done with us, and so I think it's a smart purchase.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Full motion carried. This is a resolution at the minute, the minute, the Board of Supervisors meeting July seventeenth to read now therefore be it hereby resolved that the same as hereby zone acres from agricultural district to A R agricultural residential and the coordinates is hereby adopted known as ordinance number seventy-seven dash two eleven.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Magzman.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Laylan.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to direct the county engineer to proceed with a vacation of excess right-of-way pursuant to six three oh six two three of the Code of Iowa in the amount of thirty-one hundred dollars generated located north of Pointe Cemetery at the intersection of Gilbertville and Indian Creek Roads.
Second.
Cathy.
Yeah, this comes about from a longtime request, and the county does own this right-of-way in our name. We own it by, we have the deed to this property. We acquired it probably fifty years ago when the intersection at Gilbertville Road and Indian Creek was realigned. And we acquired quite a large parcel, and now we are determining that we don't need this, this much right-of-way. Our surveyor has created a separate parcel. It is approximately point two five acres. And we would like to be able to surplus that parcel. We did have it appraised according to our attorney, Mr. Burke, and it appraised for sixteen hundred dollars and the cost of the appraisal was fifteen hundred dollars. We were advised that the parcel could be sold by the county at a cost, at a minimum cost at this time of thirty-one hundred dollars. So by creating, allowing us to create this parcel, the county would then be free to sell this property, this excess right-of-way.
And we're selling the property to whom?
We, there are no identified buyers at this time. The next step would be to, we will send certified letters to the adjacent property owners as well as, we are required to look for the, the owners who the property was originally acquired from. We can find no longer any evidence of them owning any property here in Blackhawk County. There might be a next of kin. Further to the north on Indian Creek, we will send a letter to those individuals as well. And then there should be a general notice of sale for the property.
So for the most part, the thirty-one hundred dollars is probably the cost, minimal cost. Could be some more publication costs and that type of thing.
I guess that's, that's true as well.
So when you're asking us to proceed, it's to do those things that you just outlined?
Yes, that will allow our surveyor to sign the plat, and then we will go have it recorded as a separate parcel. And then the county will be able to offer that parcel for sale. And then we would follow the Code of Iowa. It has to be for sale for sixty days or take, take bids for sixty days, and then the bids would be received either by us or by your, by your, the board secretary, and then we would, you could open the bids.
Has anybody been out there?
I haven't.
Couple of years ago.
Nobody's going to buy it. It's part of the cemetery.
I was going to say, the cemetery.
You've got the road on both sides of it and the drive of the cemetery. You couldn't even put anything out there. There's no reason anybody would want it.
Well, cemetery wanted it, didn't they? Or didn't they want it to the cemetery?
Yeah, the township wants it.
The township.
Pete, there's got to be a way, the county owns it, to get it over to the township.
There is.
Which is the county, so.
We are in the process of achieving that end.
That's, yeah, this is what we need to do.
I mean, it's clearly nobody's going to want it because it sits with the cemetery. It's on a corner. And I think the township cemetery's got permission to fill some of that in. They've been doing that off and on for the last year or two. Their plans obviously is just to expand.
Cemetery.
The cemetery or maybe even parking, so the existing road that goes in there. It's a well-kept township, county cemetery.
So they may be interested, maybe not in purchase of it?
Well, it's taxpayers.
Well, I don't mean they're buying it, but I meant it's recouping our cost, I guess, is what I meant.
Well, it's taxpayers. The county owns it and taxpayers own the township, so you're basically charging taxpayers to buy it. I mean, every day we accepted a cemetery here a year or two. They just deed it, quit deed it. We have nothing to say about it. So.
No, they can't.
I think it's kind of ridiculous to say recoup cost from who?
Well.
Taxpayers?
The taxpayers are having to pick up these costs.
Yeah. But it's county that, it goes county to county. You see what I'm saying?
I, I'm seeing what you're saying as far as the property itself.
It's just, I mean, every day we do things that taxpayers are paying for.
Mm-hmm.
If it was going to go to a private person, I could see that, but it's taxpayers' land is who it is.
Well, I don't expect we'll have a lot of interest in it.
Oh, I doubt if you'll have any, unless she digs somebody up for a hundred years ago.
That's true.
And wants to make three grand.
I don't think they'll have that much money, Tom.
And I would point out that it would be from a separate township budget that's taxed just to the residents of that township. So it wouldn't be the entire county going to the ent- the entire county, so...